Well, it's now seven o'clock and I'd like to call this steady session of the Lakewood City Council for Monday, August 24th to order. The first item of business we have is a joint Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting and to go over the work plan. And so I think we'll kick off on that with the Chair of that committee, Ken Whitco.
Okay, I'm here. Are you, can you believe that? I'm going to actually turn off my background here. You know, bear with me just a moment. I don't know if that worked or not, but doesn't matter. Okay, fine, good. Do I need to wait at all or am I good to go?
Good to go.
Okay. All right, well, good evening, Mayor Anderson, and I don't see Deputy Mayor Whelan here tonight, but City Manager John Goldfield, of course, and all the other city council members, thanks for your time. My name is Ken Whitco. I'm Chair of the Public Safety Advisory Committee. And I believe, I was told, I'm not sure how to tell if any of the others members are here, but all the other members of PSCAC were planning on attending tonight, including our very capable Vice Chair James Hairston. So if they're here, I'm not sure how to tell that, but.
I can tell if you'd, if you'd called a roll of your members, I can tell you whether they're on or not. Mr. Hairston's here.
And Mark Terry?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, let me, I'll just do that because I'm going to say their names again, so, but I wanted to just recognize all the members of PSCAC and the many hours that they all volunteer and serve the city. So Mark Terry, Mark Pella, and then our prodigal Ray Dodson, who has returned recently, and of course, our longtime member and past Chair, Dr. Alan Hart. Those are the members that we have.
I think everybody's here there but Mr. Dodson.
Okay, perfect. So I believe we also may have a couple of other members, but that information escaped me at the moment. I would also be remiss if I didn't recognize the fine work of city staff, Chief of Police, the support from Mike, Chief Mike Zarro, and of course, our Administrative Assistant, Joanna Nichols does a great job, so. But a year ago, our committee took some time to evaluate its purpose and mission. What we wanted to do was to make sure that, that the tasks that were before us and the things that we were focusing on were actually meeting the needs of the city and fulfilling the mission or the goal of the committee. So we discussed that in length, and at some, at one point, we even discussed becoming, whether or not we needed to become an ad hoc committee. And in the end, what we did was based upon the goals that we seem to, that seemed to come before us, that we decided that we would actually just meet every other month. We thought that that would be adequate to help meet the needs of PSCAC and the city of Lakewood. So in the last year, before some of our accomplishments, and I think the biggest thing right now is the evaluation of the fireworks code and just sort of evaluating with the public, what, if any, changes may need to take place with regard to fireworks within the city. And that ended up with a submitted letter to the council with our recommendation at that point was to not to change any aspect of the current ordinance. And that does not reflect the feelings of the PSCAC members. That just reflects what we found, what was, what would be cognizant of the abilities of this, of the staff to be able to implement those, whether it was a ban or just a curtailment or something like that. So I can tell you that most of the members of PSCAC, I don't believe I'd be misspeaking if I said most of them supported a ban, but we felt the futility of that was not necessary. And so we supported not changing that and also supporting a, an educational outreach to the city, to the residents. As, as a matter of fact, just talking about what happened this past July 4th, I actually took one of my, I'm a drone pilot and I'm, and I'm able to fly at night legally, so I flew my drone up. And I'm going to tell you that I feel like the city, something happened and it was worse this year than I've ever seen it before. And in my neighborhood, it was worse, but I, I will attribute that mostly to the COVID-19 situation and the shutdown of many of the other aspects of people being able to go to big displays. So anyway, I, I won't belabor that point. So the other thing we did was evaluating information regarding adult family homes. And we concluded there was really nothing else the PSCAC could, committee could do with regard to safety or other issues with the adult family homes, that it had been kind of taken care of itself and really was not within our ability to do anything else. So we also spent some time working with city or discussing with city engineers and getting information, public works regarding the train tracks and safety concerns to include the discussions of possible solutions that we, and the big issue right now is the crossing at Clover Creek, the railroad crossing. And we know that that is a bit of a conundrum right now. And it seems that really there's not much that we can do about it, except maybe recommend to the council at some point that there needs to be some focus with that. But we also understand that that is a, an Amtrak issue, but that was just one kind of thing that got it, got sort of pushed aside. And I'll just say, just as a side note, I don't know if any of you are aware, if you've seen the pictures of that, or if you're aware of Clover Creek Crossing, the pictures there, there is no real way for a person who's disabled or in a wheelchair to cross safely. And I'm not sure if any of you are aware, but there was a recent incident in which a police officer actually rescued an individual that was trapped in a, on a train track in a wheelchair and just pulled that person to safety seconds before the train did serious harm. And if I will remember or remind, if I, with all due respect, and I don't, I'm not trying to talk down to anybody, but I do recall several years ago, just before a very catastrophic event happened with Amtrak, that Mayor Anderson also brought up that issue. And then almost prophetically, something happened. And so I think that that might be an issue that needs to be addressed at some time later. So, so our work plan really was to really, what we really wanted to do was, looking at our mission statement, was to figure out how to recruit new members. At least that was my main goal, because I felt like our membership was not nearly diversified enough to represent the city. So that was a big goal for us, was to recruit new members and diversify, with diversity in mind for the city. It's always better to get different perspectives. And so the process of that would, would have been to go through to all the neighboring, neighborhood associations and thereby helping to energize those associations. We would go there, present PSCAC information, PSCAC information, recruit members that way. And we started out doing that, of course, we have some of our members that are very dedicated to go and be at some of these associations and, and start, started getting that information out. And I do believe we actually recruited a couple of members and then COVID hit, which means that any plans we had were basically kiboshed at that point. So we, we have not been able to go to any of these association meetings or recruit to the extent that we were wanting to. We also had a plan to be involved with the, with Summerfest and the Dunk Tank this year, but of course, that was mixed. And then, of course, we're still interested in infrastructure safety issues. That's, that is in a nutshell. I can answer any questions that you may have or. I'm not hearing you, Mayor Anderson. I don't read lips that well.
Questions from Mr. Whitco. I'd like to, also, there appears to be good attendance from the committee tonight. And if any committee member has anything that they would like to add, please raise your electronic hand, give you an opportunity to speak. Not seeing any hands go up. I'll go back to council. So. What if, what issues have you self-identified for the future as opposed to what the council kind of imposes on you as issues to look into?
I, I think, it's a good question, Mayor Anderson. I think that ultimately, the biggest thing for us is, is diversity on the PSCAC committee. And ultimately, that is because, because we kind of recognize that there's different perspectives and different things that are going on in different parts of the city. We need to get a representation from all over the city. And so that's one of the issues. The other, obviously, the fireworks issue has not gone away. That one is, that's an ugly issue in and of itself. We find that, you know, this chatter on, in social media, boy, it goes all kinds of different ways. It's truly amazing. And especially this past July 4th was a really big issue. And, and, but ultimately, we don't, other than the things that I've mentioned, they're really, unless one of the other members can fill in the gaps for me, it really isn't anything else. Councilmember Bran Stetter has been very, very proactive in helping us and getting us information that we asked for. And if I'm missing anything, councilmember Bran Stetter, that'd be, you could also help fill in gaps.
Oh, wait. Mr. Bran Stetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Whitco. Yeah, I guess I would tell my other colleagues on the council that, that this committee at that, in their meetings demonstrates a real interest to be of assistance to us and be involved in both researching and, and of being a litmus test to the community on issues around public safety, being able to go and do that. I think as we're moving forward in some of the issues that are around public safety, both on, on the law enforcement and the health side, as to what a new normal is going to be like as we come, come out of the COVID-19 into, into a more stable situation. I think this is a committee that while we may not have a list of things we would like their input on today, I think that they, they remain ready and are a very capable group to be able to do that in, in, in the, in the coming year. And hopefully, they will be able to move forward with building their diversity, particularly their geographical diversity, to represent all the neighborhoods of the city as they move forward.
Mr. Whelan.
Thank you. Thanks, Ken, and the committee members for, for being here tonight and for doing the work you do. Couple of questions. You know, we do have a public hearing set for the fireworks issue in September. My question to you is based upon, you know, the information that you guys may have received. Do you think that the vigorous public comment that we're likely to get, we've received a lot already, to be honest, we've received, you know, both by in-person testimony, at least on Zoom, and also a lot of written comments. Do you think it's likely going to change the Public Safety Advisory Committee's recommendation to us or not?
Thank you for your question, Deputy Mayor Whelan. I, I don't think that actually, because it's such a diverse mix of opinions, so our recommendation was not to change anything, but if you listen to the scuttlebutt, you know, people really, one of the things that we recommended, I'm sorry, I'm digressing, one of the things we recommended was an educational approach to helping people understand why we made the decision. So we've seen, in our last meeting, we saw a very lengthy, I don't know exactly how to say it, but opinion piece in the Suburban Times that was not very kind to us or the members of PSCAC, because we, I can't remember if this person wanted a complete ban and didn't understand why we didn't recommend it or why it shouldn't be done. But there's just so much more that goes into it, that an education, I mean, I'm, I'm very typical, I want a ban, let's just do it, let's get it done. But when you realize all the other added components, it's just not so fair and not so easy to just say ban it. And so I think ultimately, if people don't understand why, if they don't get the education of why a total ban may be, may be futile, then I think they're just going to be, I don't think that will change. And then, of course, there are many people that don't want a ban. They want, you know, I remember when I was young, I wanted to go out and blow stuff up with my kids. So, so, you know, I get that. I just don't want them to blow it up over my house now. So I'm not, I really, I think education is a big deal in helping people to just understand what's going on, why.
Very good. The fact that you are receiving and feeling that the multitude of voices on either side of the issue makes me just say, welcome to public service and thank you for what you do.
Amen.
So, so my next question for you is kind of on the lines of community conversations. You know, we've, we've heard a lot from our diverse communities about perhaps the desire and the need to dig into our, you know, our training manuals and our various police policies, use-to-force policies, and perhaps look at the issue of whether or not body cams may be something that the city of Lakewood should adopt as a matter of not just policy, but budget. Cities like Tacoma and I think Pierce County are looking at the issue. Does a community, the community through the committee have any sort of sense of direction on that issue? Is that something you'd like to add to the work plan? Would it be of value to the community members you're hearing from?
That's another great question. And, and I don't, as a committee, we have not addressed that at all, not talked about it, but that is certainly worthy of some focus. And I wouldn't have any issue whatsoever adding it to the work plan, doing what we can to get some committee, some community feedback as to how they feel about the cameras. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, if nothing else, it broadens the voices that we all get to hear from by having you folks out in the communities and attending the neighborhood association meetings and chewing on these tough issues as a committee. So I, I think it would be helpful perhaps to add to the work plan, but I'm just one of seven, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Kelly Fong, we have two committee members with their hands up, Mark Pella and Mr. Hart, I believe. Could you promote them to panelists so they can speak? Call him Mr. Pella first.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say, and it kind of just now came up, one of the things that we worked on was better participation in the neighborhood associations. We've always had a member assigned to each one of them, but we made an effort to get two of them assigned to each association so that if one couldn't be there, there would always be one present. Unfortunately, the COVID-19 came about about the time we did that. And so I think we probably only participated in maybe one or two meetings before we had the, most of them were canceled. The North Neighborhood is doing theirs by Zoom now. So starting again this next month, we'll be trying to do a Zoom one. The first one was a little rough, but I think we got the edges knocked off.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hart, who comes up as Susan Hart, and I.
I attended a meeting not long ago as Nancy's iPhone, so.
When your wife uses a equipment, yeah. Two, two comments. One is, one of the neighborhood associations I attended was a kind of an informal one called Lake, our Springbrook Connections. And the point that was made to me was what they would, I asked them what our committee could do for them or what their concerns were, and they would like to have more police presence, which kind of surprised me. The second thing is on the issue of body cameras. When that first came up, when we first started putting car cameras in, Chief Zarro had some pretty good reservations about the privacy issues regarding body cameras. And I don't believe those issues have ever been adequately addressed. I, he, for instance, he pointed out that if an officer came to our house and was invited in, of course, but if he came here on business, his camera would probably be activated. But somebody could see those tapes based on a freedom of information request. And we might not want that. We might not want somebody using police footage to case our, our home. And I think the freedom of information, pretty important issue if we start talking about body cameras.
Thank you. See, Mr. Dodson has his hand up. Ray?
I'm trying. I think I finally made it. It started about 40 minutes ago and I seem not to have the magic touch. I'm not sure if I've got some background. I, I received a few feedback things from the community and I'm not sure why this, is this really, can you actually hear me or you sound as bad on your side as mine? All right. I think I've got too much feedback, so I'll, I'll pass until I see a resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Whitco. Before I get to Mr. Whitco, you would call on me, Mr. Mayor, wouldn't you, after that introduction to the Twilight Zone?
Yeah, exactly.
Since that's one of the most best done television shows ever. However, giving to you, Mr. Whitco, I appreciate the report and I have a question. We have on the council talked a great deal about mental health in the city. And I'm wondering if any of your committee members have a background in mental health? And if not, perhaps when you were looking for people to serve on the committee, you could, there's somebody with that. Thank you.
That is actually a very, a great idea. We, we haven't actually looked at that per se, but we also thought a great person to have on the committee would be someone who represents businesses in Lakewood. So, and I have reached out to a couple of businesses to find out if they'd like to send a member. So again, that's another aspect of trying to diversify who's on the committee. So appreciate that. That's a great idea.
Thank you.
If I could add to that, Mr. Mayor, remember the candidates we received for the position for the I-940, 940 citizen input to the police? There were several really good folks on that that who weren't selected for that position. Maybe you could forward those to Mr. Whitco and they could make inquiry as to whether they would like to be involved in some level on the PSCAC. There were some quite good folks on that, including a woman, I believe, had a significant mental health professional history.
And kind of speaking of mental health, you know, we've in the past looked at this committee in a way that kind of defined public safety broadly. It's not a police-oriented committee in type, although that's one of the aspects of it. And going down the road here, we might want to consider the health, safety of our, some of our more unfortunate residents. We've looked at the group homes, the adult family homes, but one issue is the extent to which the current involuntary commitment laws limit the ability to mandate treatment for people with drug and alcohol or mental health problems that are on the streets. And whether that needs to be changed, but that would be developing a city policy for legislative action at the state level. But I think it's becoming more and more apparent, at least to me, that a great impediment in the ability to help people who, as one housing advocate in Pierce County says, have the right to die with their rights on, or out there on the street when they could get help. We have another, another John with a hand raised. There's a just a duplicate of Mr. Simpson's earlier. Well, if not, well, thank you again, Mr. Whitco and committee. You've done woman's work on some difficult problems. I appreciate your efforts to go ahead, going, going forward to recruit members who adequately and accurately represent the viewpoints of our city so that we can have the best information possible when we make decisions.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. I'm not sure if you see if, if Ray is trying to speak or is he?
Ray, Ray's coming back.
He's just, he's, he's the comeback kid.
All right, this, Mr. Dodson, let's see if we can hear you this time. Well, thanks.
That was entertaining.
We'll attempt and we'll move on to our next topic at warp speed, which is the Point Defiance Bypass Rail Update. And for this, we have Mr. Andrew Austin, the government and community relations manager for Sound Transit.
Hi there. Thank you, Mayor Anderson and council. Thanks for having us tonight. We're happy to give an update just about what's going on with the potential resumption of service at Point Defiance Bypass. And what you'll hear tonight is not a definitive schedule for when the service is going to be coming back or not, but you will hear a. be coming back or not, but you will hear a process for how we as the railroad owner are working on this important piece of work. So I'm joined tonight by Julie Marshall, who's our director of our project transition office, Moises Gutierrez, who's our interim chief safety officer, and Paul Dennison, who's our interim executive director of operations. Julie and Moises are going to be doing most of the talking and Paul and I will be on hand for any questions you have after our relatively brief presentation. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Julie or Moises.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, Moises. I can't hear you, Julie, for some reason.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not allowing me to share my screen. It says it's disabled.
Can you enable that, Ms. Clay Fong?
It has been enabled. Ms. Marshall, try again.
Thank you. All right. Moises, can you see?
Yes, I can.
You're up.
Great, thank you. Well, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. We appreciate your time this evening. I'll go ahead and reintroduce myself. My name is Moises Gutierrez and I'm the acting chief safety officer at Sound Transit. I've been at that role since early December of last year. And as Andrew noted with us, it's also Julie Marshall, director of the project transition office, and then Paul Dennison, executive director of the operations department at Sound Transit. Next slide, please. We are here to provide you with a briefing on the resumption of passenger service on Point Defiance Bypass and also to provide an update and other changes that that we're incorporating at Sound Transit relative to the broader safety function. Next slide, please. Before we get into the details, as Andrew noted, it's important to acknowledge Sound Transit's priorities and areas of focus prior to allowing Amtrak to resume service of the bypass. First of all, Sound Transit is the owner railroad and that is a role that we're taking very seriously. And with that, we will enforce compliance from Amtrak and WashDot prior to use of the corridor. And this means that safety will continue to drive progress, not schedule. I expect us to comply with all the applicable recommendations from the NTSB and the internal audit reports that were issued last year. And resumption of service will only occur once all of the established requirements are completed, verified, audited and closed. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand this over to Julie to go through this in a bit more depth. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Moises. And good evening again. My name is Julie Marshall and I'm the director of the project transition office and I oversee all of the agency's activation processes for our major light rail extensions, the Center Community Rail and as well as our Bus Stride Rapid program. As part of this effort, we are treating the resumption of passenger service to the Lakewood subdivision with the same rigor as we do with any of our other processes, our other projects coming online. What that means is we are employing a full activation process, which is our way of our doing our due diligence and being sure that we are very intentional and disciplined about how we go about verifying that we are ready to resume service. What you see on the screen here is a high level overview of what that process looks like. I'll start at the bottom of the slide and work my way up. So at the bottom of the slide, in the three green boxes you see are the subcommittees that are focused, have specific focus areas. I'm going to talk about the safety certification subcommittee in the next slide. The bottom green boxes also coordinate, this is where our subject matter experts for the project live and do their work to review and evaluate documentation and that's received from our tenants. The blue box off on the right hand side of your screen, that is our external startup team. And this is where we, as we coordinate with the tenants and all external stakeholders in order to ensure a shared meaning around what the requirements are that are expected to be completed prior to the resumption of service. The reason why that's a dashed dotted line is that this is to depict very clearly that the external stakeholders are not part of Sound Transit's decision making process when it comes to identifying closure of the requirement and readiness to resume service. So once the staff level, the bottom green boxes determine that we are approaching readiness to resume the next phase of the service or next phase of the project, that recommendation is brought to our departmental leadership who overview and audit and ensure that, that the recommendations and the requirements have been fully complied with. Once they've, that review has been done, it's elevated to our chief safety office, officer, Moises, as well as work discussed with our deputy CEO of Service and Delivery, the Kimberly Farley, and our executive director of operations, currently Paul Dennison. That, that group is responsible for endorsing and verifying that, again, all recommendations have been satisfied and is then endorsing the recommendation that approves or that will, for a resumption of service, which then goes to our CEO, Mr. Roboff, for his approval. As I mentioned, I want to zoom in very quickly on the safety certification process. So as Moises mentioned, safety is driving this resumption of service effort. And our review and approval of documentation to ensure that Amtrak and WashDot are fully compliant with the requirements laid out for them is, is of paramount importance. The way we've worked with this is the LMH and NTSB reports, the LMH report was an independent audit or independent evaluation that was commissioned from our CEO's office to evaluate our internal processes and the, and the incident leading up to, well, the incident. But those two reports generated recommendations which have been decomposed into specific requirements, actionable requirements that has been communicated and shared with Amtrak and WashDot. We are in the verification process right now and we anticipate being in this loop for a very long time for a few reasons. One, during the verification process, Amtrak is submitting documentation to demonstrate compliance with the requirements. In some instances, we are requesting additional documentation or new documentation that has not been requested in order to fully satisfy that. Sound Transit will be recertifying all of the physical infrastructure for this effort. And so due to that, we are also working to make sure that we are reevaluating our preliminary hazel analysis, that's the PHA, and also our operational hazard analysis. Anything that's been identified as an undesirable hazard is elevated to the highest level of our agency, the senior oversight panel, advisory panel for their review. The fourth number there is something in addition, that an additional step that we're taking with this effort, just to ensure that we are, we are following the processes that we've laid out as for the agency for activation, but to also ensure that we are, are, have met all the requirements in the way in which is, would be expected. And that is to conduct an independent audit of both our process and accuracy of the review of requirements. Once we complete that process, the last step is to sign the certificates of conformance, which states that that project team, the subject matter experts are satisfied with their, their results of their review and are prepared to present a recommendation for executive review through the process. At that point, we'll move outside of the verification box and we'll move into the closure of all requirements. And this is where the PHA and the OHA must be accepted and signed off by our director of construction and safety, system safety, and the review of the delivery council, the CEO, the deputy CEO, I'm sorry, the deputy CEO and our chief safety officer and executive director of operations. The last step, of course, is for Sound Transit CEO's approval of the resumption of service. Looking ahead, some key activities that we have coming up with this, with this effort is that we are in the process of finalizing the readiness requirements and schedule. Moises mentioned, schedule or safety is driving the schedule, schedule is not driving this process. So all requirements are tied to an activity in the schedule that will only be closed out once we have acceptance of, of compliance. If there's no acceptance of compliance, then that requirement will be closed and the schedule will continue to move out until we have full compliance. So we're in the process of finalizing that and developing the schedule so that way we have a better idea of tracking when we might be getting closer to a resumption of service. At this time, we have no identified window for that. We are still in the very early stages of finalizing these requirements and communicating with Amtrak and WashDot of what's expected. But the other key part that we have that we're trying to finalize with the schedule is also making sure that we have adequate notice to our elected officials in the community where, who are impacted by the 2017 incident. This means, this is not just a one time when we want to make sure that we're communicating with the community. We want to make sure that we're committing, communicating clearly prior to testing on the right of way, that's ROW. So prior to testing on the right of way and as well as prior to entering into cruise qualification test runs. So there's two different types of testing, both of which would require equipment out on the, on the road. So we'll make sure that we are, are engaging our stakeholders and our community at that time. And then of course, prior to the resumption of service. I think the last slide, Moises, you're going to just highlight real quickly on the safety.
Yes. So thank you, Julie, for that. Did want to spend just a couple of minutes on other areas that we, where we have made progress over the last eight months. I would start by saying that when I assume my acting role in December of last year, we recognized that though sobering and challenging the post incident reports that were issued also provided us with a rich opportunity to review and enhance the safety function at Sound Transit more broadly. So I just wanted to touch on a couple of items. We recently reorganized certain divisions either out of or into the safety department to ensure that the organization is laser focused on safety. We are also in the process of implementing other internal reorganization opportunities based on feedback from the private sector as well as staff. Second, happy to report to the national recruitment of the new chief safety officer as well underway as, as we speak. And third, the Sound Transit Board of Directors approved the FDA compliant agency safety plan in June. This was a key achievement. Sound Transit was one of the first transit agencies in the country to reach this milestone. Finally, we're developing an actionable work plan to enhance the safety function more broadly, as I mentioned. This document will incorporate recommendations from the, from the independent review commissioned by the CEO's office in 2019, that Julie mentioned. And we expect for this document to be finalized by next month. I also expect, expect that the agency's governing criteria will be updated by early next year and the outcomes of this work plan will be applicable to all the modes that we operate, link like rail, commuter rail, express buses and overtime bus rapid transit. And I think that's pretty much it. I'll go ahead and stop here and address any questions you may have. Thank you.
I'll just add one thing quickly at the end. But this is, we're relatively early in this process, as you just saw through that presentation. So we are absolutely here to take your questions today, but this will not be the last time you hear from us. And as we get closer to testing and or running service on the track, there'll be more transparent communication from us as well as the track operators being Amtrak and WashDot. So please, this is not your only, their only opportunity for us to be in front of you, but we look forward to the discussion.
Questions? Mr. Whalen?
Well, thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight and explaining the process from your agency to our community. It's very important to us, as you know. We were there from the very beginning on this with WashDot representatives telling us how safe it was going to be. So my question to you is, I understand clearly from your presentation that safety, not schedule is driving the process, which I think is fantastic. When this whole project started, we were all kind of informed as members of the community that the funding was to make the rail service more reliable. And that meant in part that there needed to be a six minute shaving off the time schedule to get from Seattle to Portland, which prompted the rail service to be clocked at 79 miles per hour. So my question to you, as you're going through this process and driving home, the very important facet of your work, that safety, not schedule, will drive the process and hopefully a safer rail service. Is a 79 mile per hour train service necessarily critical here at this point, based upon your review and how you're processing this? Or is it going to be safer service, likely slower service through the urban corridors?
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Actually, I'm hoping Paul Dennison, if you could help us with, with this question in speed.
Thanks, Moises. So I'll do the best I can. So that would be a, that would be a request that would need to be made to WashDot and Amtrak, the operators of the service. We, we only own the track. So we don't, we don't operate the service Amtrak does with, under contract through WashDot. So that's exactly where that question should go or that request.
I just wonder if your ownership of the track and based upon your work, very, very significant work in reviewing the safety recommendations of the NTSB, whether slowing the service down might be an outcome from your review, since you do own the track?
Yeah. And, and so again, like I, like I, like I said, that would be a, that would be a request from the operator of the service on the train of, of, of Amtrak through WashDot as they're contracted to operate through there.
Yeah. And I think what, just one thing that I would add is since we're the, well, Sound Transit owns the, the track, it's our responsibility to make sure that it's maintained up to 79 miles per hour. So that's something that we, we will continue to do. But to Paul's point, I think that's a question that engage, that spans beyond Sound Transit and with WashDot and the operator.
Thank you.
So as a follow up to that, it's been our observation since the beginning of this process that Sound Transit's safety culture is much more robust than that of WashDot and Amtrak. I think that's borne out by the NTSB study and then Sound Transit's own follow up. But there were a number of items in the NTSB report that are actually things that need to be performed by the operator. For example, the positive, very simple one, positive train, train control, the, the track was ready, the, the train was not. Train didn't even have a GPS. The cars were found to be deficient from a safety standpoint. What enforcement mechanism does Sound Transit have to ensure that WashDot, Amtrak comply with all the safety recommendations? Once, you know, my understanding of Sound Transit's internal report is that when all the safety recommendations complied with before it's reopened, what's, how do you ensure that happens when a number of these things are in the operator's realm?
Thank you for that. I'll, I'll go ahead and just speak very briefly and then I'll see if my colleagues want to expand on this. But even with those items that really fall on Amtrak or WashDot, Amtrak will not be allowed back in the, in the bypass until we see evidence and we can audit that evidence that those items have been satisfied fully. Our CEO has made that very clearly, has made that point very clear to, to everyone. And we're in lockstep insofar as those expectations. And we have related those expectations to Amtrak and WashDot and also to the FRA in writing when it comes to a full satisfaction of all of the applicable recommendations. Paul or Julie, I don't know if you guys want to, to expand?
Well, we have a, we also have a very robust federal regulator that oversees Amtrak and, and requires all railroads operating in North America for, under specific CFR regulations. So we, we can hang our hat on that, but we will also make sure that we are auditing their compliance to all of these, all of these codes of federal regulations and, and their compliance to all of these, all of these codes of federal regulations and, and any of the, any of the processes that are deemed necessary by the owner to operate on this, on this piece of railroad track. So we will audit, we will audit Amtrak on a regular basis.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the Sound Transit delegation for the report. I do have a question and it's probably a small thing, but I'm going to ask anyway. Would someone please explain to me the difference between a safety hazard and an undesirable safety hazard?
I'll, I'll give it a shot. Through the safety certification process, we will based on, well, based on expectations from the FDA, the FRA as well as industry practice, we make a full assessment of the hazards through the territory when it comes to physical and also on, on the right of way. As an agency, we have an internal document, if you will, that, that also mirrors best practices from, from the outside. And those hazards are rated. And again, there are like three or four different levels, one of which is undesirable hazards, which is more on the extreme side. And we, based on internal process, any and all hazards that are rated as such cannot, or that project, if you will, the process cannot move forward until those are elevated to a committee of senior officials within the agency. And not until we go through a risk assessment of that particular hazard, if you will, the one that's noted or rated as such, can we move forward? So it, it either needs to be mitigated back through the project, through additional design or construction mitigation, or you would have to be accepted by, by senior, by, by basically that senior level committee. And one of the things that I noted here at the end is that we, one of the recommendations also that we're employing is to enhance our internal process such as, such that those are always elevated to the CEO. In the safety management system in S M S, the CEO is, is the accountable executive of the agency. So it's my responsibility as the chief safety officer to highlight any and all undesirable hazards and higher. And again, undesirable is basically the rating that any or the hazard, that hazards could receive. Not all of them are deemed as such. Some of them are acceptable just based on the level of risk.
Can you give me an example of an acceptable safety hazard?
Good question. I think by virtue of having, for instance, at great crossings, there are a number of complexities or issues out in the field that could pose the possibility of risk. We go through a very informed process to basically assess the probability. And I would, without really going through the specifics, I think it would be premature of, on my behalf to come up with something here on the spot. They're based on project specific conditions, which could include anywhere from curvature on the track. This is maybe a hospital maybe well based on foot traffic around that area. And again, depending on the probability and the rating that would be applied to that hazard, it could be, it could be either acceptable or not, depending on the frequency as well as the risk profile.
Mr. Gutierrez, I appreciate your answers and I apologize if it seems like I'm putting you on the spot. But I would find it difficult to explain to a citizen of this city that there is a hazard at a crossing, but it's there because it's not an undesirable hazard. And I, I can also appreciate where you're coming from because one of my jobs when I was in the air force was I was a safety officer. And we worked by the principle of there will be no safety hazards because if there were, we would be putting an airplane down in Lakewood. And I guess I'm a little confused as to why the rail industry, Sound Transit at this point, doesn't or isn't guided by the same philosophy? That a safety hazard is exactly that. And as I was clearly told long ago, they can kill.
Right. Thank you for that. And I apologize if I'm failing to address your question fully. Very recently, as we have adopted the agency's safety plan, like I said, we're also in the process of enhancing the hazard assessment matrix to better align with a safety management system, the S M S approach. That again, the aerospace industry actually has adopted years before transit. And we'll be happy to follow up with maybe more specifics to address the point that you rightfully raised.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brandstetter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to follow up with a little bit on, on Mr. Simpson's discussion about hazards. When, when it came right down to it, the derailment that we had had a curve that was a hazard. And I guess I'm concerned that we're, we're told then that a committee of senior people from a variety of agencies had decided that that curve was okay as long as you put a speed limit on it. And what I've heard today is we're going to continue to look at a hazard like that, that there's a committee of senior people who's going to decide on behalf of the public whether that curve remains a, a hazard. And yet that no one, Sound Transit doesn't sound like you are either able or willing to take responsibility for the speed limit on the track anywhere. But you're going to leave the decision about speeds on the track to include the speed on that curve to operators to be able to go and do that. And I guess that, given that that was one of the primary hazards that led to that accident, I guess I'm wondering what specifically does Sound Transit have in mind as the track owner to mitigate that?
Thank you for that. I appreciate the, the question as well as the concern. And actually, here I'll, I'll touch on it. There are a couple of items, mainly one of them is we, we will expect the operator to have a positive train control fully implemented. That was one of the key items that, as you may recall, came through that, through that review. And then we have been working with the engineering group to make sure that we provide additional signage based on, again, one of the recommendations. And again, that speaks to a couple of those mitigations. And of course, operator training with full visibility to the conditions at that location. Paul, is there anything else that you would want to add?
Well, I think you summed it up pretty well, Moises. We, yes, we, we will use P T C on this stretch of rail. So positive train control governs the speed of the train. If the operator approaches an area where the, where his speed is greater than the P T C speed, the train will initiate a braking operation. So the operator of the train will have no control over that. The train will begin to brake itself. Unfortunately, P T C was not in place for the earlier issue that we had, the earlier accident that we had. P T C will be in place and Amtrak will absolutely be required to have P T C on all of their equipment.
So with respect to the speed that's programmed into the computers that make P T C run, who's going to make the decision about that speed for different track segments?
Paul, you want to, you want to?
Sure. So, so, so under CFR 213, and that's the code of federal regulations, the track is built to a certain engineering standard that has a, that has a speed that's allowable by pieces, by certain pieces of equipment on that track. That's what sets the P T C speed. And in this case, it is no faster, there's no segment faster on this bypass than 79 miles an hour. There are slower segments here, one of which is the curve, and P T C will enforce that. But it's all done through engineering and the code of federal regulations.
Okay. I, I guess I would appreciate at some future time, you know, the curve is not in Lakewood. The curve is down in Dupont. But I, if there are any slower segments in, in Lakewood to be able to go and do that. The other thing is, is that when the National Transportation Safety Board went through and had some findings, they had a series of findings that really talked about communication and, and coordination amongst agencies that included Sound Transit and WashDOT and Amtrak and FRA and perhaps some others. And I didn't glean from your earlier slides what is being done to address that and not just for this stretch of rail, but perhaps more generally regionally around rail traffic that, that, that goes on. I know the legislature commissioned a study about best practices as relates to rail safety. And I would presume that Sound Transit is at least being queried, if not engaged in, 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 in doing that. But how is that going to be better now than it was before?
Thank you. And actually, there is, and I, we apologize if we skipped over that or maybe went through it a bit fast, but Julie, maybe you can speak to the coordination with other entities. And again, that's specific to point of finance bypass or resumption of service. I recall, as, like you said, a specific recommendation on how we could enhance communications. And that's something that Julie's team has initiated.
Yeah, thanks, Moises. So, so our team is responsible. We have a bi-weekly meeting with all external stakeholders currently. That includes FRA, WashDOT, O dot, Amtrak. It also includes our other tenants that are on the quarter as well, B N S F and Tacoma Rail. And we use that bi-weekly forum as a check-in to review a single list of requirements that are assigned to each of the tenants to, to not only report on status, but to talk about what challenges are, are, we, we are seeing or that they have with being compliant, so we can satisfy that. We also work and discuss the schedule or reference back to a schedule once that's in place. And so that's how we are currently coordinating with them. We also have one-on-ones with each of the tenants and other stakeholders to have, to really get into the weeds to make sure that we are very, very clear on the documentation that we're receiving and the, in the compliance as it relates to the requirements. This coordination has, has, has been going very well. We are using the same means and methods again, as we do for the activation of all of our other projects. What's different here is we are now putting this, the requirements around the coordination with the external stakeholders as part of the ongoing, the plan that operations has to monitor continued compliance after this effort, we do resume service. So those are the, that's how we're currently coordinating with them. That was part of the, the blue box that showed the external startup meeting. And just, I want to just reiterate this, the coordination that we have with the external stakeholders is just an input into our process. They are not part of the decision-making process as it relates to returning to service that solely resides within Sound Transit.
Right. Thank, thank you. And I guess then the, the last area that I just wanted to get some clarity for myself on is when we looked at the National Transportation Safety Board and they were, as their list of recommendations, able to go and do that. And when I looked at your slide, that is perhaps slide four or five, there was a process that seemed to indicate that the recommendations were there, but they transitioned into applicable requirements.
Yes, that's correct.
So I, I guess a little bit about how does a recommendation make that transition to be a requirement or not meet the standard of being an applicable requirement going forward?
That's a great question. So there are multiple requirements that we say have to be fulfilled in order to satisfy the recommendation. So for example, the recommendation that said we had to have better coordination with our external stakeholders, there's about five or six requirements that have been identified as far as saying generating frequencies of meetings and check-ins, making sure we have documentation and, and how decisions are being made and communicated. For example, so there's a variety of different requirements that nest under each of the recommendations. What we're seeing is every requirement has to be fulfilled before we would consider close out a recommendation and say a recommendation is, is completed. So there are many more requirements outside of the already numerous recommendations that were given to everyone.
That's all I have other than to thank Mr. Ross and Ms. Marshall, Mr. Gutierrez and Mr. Dennison for, for being here and being as candid as they can at this point in the process with us about what is going on. Look forward to the next time.
Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, but first I want to dovetail on Councilmember Brandstetter's remarks about the curve, which isn't in the city of Lakewood. Positive, so the accident occurs first time out. And then we're immediately told afterwards by everybody, if we just had positive train control, it wouldn't be a problem. Then this whole process goes through and it says, well, there's other, other problems. And I see that curve down there. And basically what we were told, I think in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, is the reason the curve wasn't fixed is it would create, you'd have to do a new bridge and it was just too darn expensive. It's $200 million or something. It's just too expensive. And so now we're told a technological fix. And because Americans, we love technology and technology will save the day. We've got it. It's positive train control. We can go as fast as we fricking want around that thing. We'll get that 75, 79 miles an hour, which apparently is the holy grail of passenger rail. And I'm not sure why, and maybe you can explain that to us, why Amtrak and WashDOT have this fixation of going fast through residential areas and fast around corners that they can't negotiate. So at the end of the day, the first crash was a failure to negotiate a curve that happens to drivers all the time. Now we're told there's a technological fix and I still can't help but feel it's still, we will do the technological fix. Trust us, we'll still be able to go racing around. we'll do the technological fix, trust us, we'll still be able to go racing around that corner. I think it's a physics problem. And I just, I just think if I could do the physics and the math, I would be sitting there trying to figure it out. And I'm like, I think it's still very dangerous because you're taking fast, new track and whipping it around a corner that was built for trains in the 19, I guess they built it when they built I-5, 1955 or something. You know, what this, what's going to be the speed around the corner? And my challenge is a full passenger train has not gone around that corner yet at speed. So how fast are they, how fast is Amtrak saying they have to go around that corner?
Thank you. Actually, just real quick, the speed through that curve is not 79 miles per hour. So I appreciate your comment. Paul, do you recall what the speed is, the design speed?
The speed limit through the corner is 30 miles an hour, Moises, 30, 3, 0.
Okay, so the positive train control will dampen that thing down to 30 miles an hour?
That's correct. Yes, that's the design. The design is to intervene into the operation of the train based on how heavy the train is, the locomotive. All of those factors are engineered into it, so it can slow it down far enough ahead of time. So if the operator wasn't paying attention, that the PTC, based on that, will slow the train down well before the 30 mile an hour corner so that the train would negotiate that.
Okay, so when you say well before, so I'm going through Lakewood at 79 miles an hour. I hit Dupont, is that too late?
And I wouldn't know exactly where, you know, where all that fits into it. The signage, the signage on the railroad is very precise. And that's what triggers, that's what triggers those commands is the signage and the engineering to the placement of those, of those points, if you will.
Yeah. I might jump in here real quick and say that as a team, one of the things that we are doing is we're preparing a graphic that shows the alignment, where the mileage posts or the signposts are, and then showing the speed on the track. That is in development. That might be something that we can share once that's ready, just to help answer that question. The other thing I was going to add is that part of the crew qualification requirements that we have put onto Amtrak is to not only increase the number of training qualification runs that have to happen, but also to train them in the absence of PTC, what do they need to do? And in order to ensure that, that on the off chance that that technology, to your point, wasn't active, that that was in place, that with the speed signs and that their, their operating procedures. Those requirements are also continuing requirements that we will continue to work with and monitor as, as we, once we do resume service. So that's, those are more examples of requirements that we have levied here, above and beyond.
So help me with positive train control or PTC. Does it go with the train or is it part of the track?
The answer is both. It has a wayside and a back office where all the computing is done. And there's a transceiver and a transmitter on the wayside and in the, in the equipment. And as the equipment operates, it constantly communicates with the wayside. That's kind of it at like a 10,000-foot level.
Okay, so it's not possible that Sound Transit runs umpteen engines a day? I don't know how many you guys own or WashDOT Rail owns the trains. Is that, or Amtrak? Amtrak, so let's talk about Amtrak. They run the Coast Starlight up and down from Seattle or Vancouver to San Diego. How do we know that all that, you know, and they're down there in a switching yard in LA and they put a new engine on, how do we know it has PTC?
Well, the, the PTC, the equipment on the train, but for one thing, that the railroad cannot run that equipment without PTC because there won't be an interface, and they have to have the interface. But I mean, you could certainly take a rogue engine and try to operate it without PTC. It is, it is a piece of technology that you could circumvent in various circumstances. That would be, you know, that would be an act of sabotage or vandalism and a criminal act.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even thinking along those lines. I'm thinking that there's umpteen hundred engines or umpteen thousand engines out there. They get switched out for whatever reason. If every Amtrak train already had PTC, why did the one that went down the tracks that day not have it?
Well, and part of it was the federal requirement. The federal requirement demands that every piece of passenger equipment have PTC on it. And certain material transportation on freight trains such as hazardous material, that's a congressional mandate. So they would be in violation of a federal law if they were to operate without PTC.
So, so so at the time the accident occurred, they weren't required to have PTC?
No, unfortunately not.
Okay. And it's, and it's your judgment that if it had PTC that day, I mean, we've been told it wouldn't have happened?
Well, technology's not perfect. I mean, but, but in my, in my professional opinion, that PTC would have intervened.
What other changes are, are any changes scheduled to occur in the safety situation at right-ofaways and whatnot in the city of Lakewood as part of this?
Well, so we're going to go ahead and go through, and I think Julie spoke to that. We will redo the PHA, the preliminary hazard analysis and the operational hazard analysis from scratch. So that'll include a very deliberate and thoughtful review of every single element, equipment, piece of track through, through that, through that area. And based on project-specific or site-specific considerations, there may be additional items that we need to implement. But we will go through that when we do the PHA. And is there anything that you would add to that? Thank you.
Okay, so help me understand WashDOT's role because they, I mean, quite honestly, they, when they've come to the council before, I guess, maybe this was in a fair assessment, but they kind of disavow all responsibility for just about everything that occurred and just about anything that doesn't go right in the city of Lakewood, they just disavow it. I don't even, you know, if you listen to them long enough, I don't even know what role they play. And you've helped us tonight with that. But when you start talking about safety issues in Lakewood, do they have a veto power over that?
Oh, Julie, were you trying to speak? Oh, she says no, the answer is no. We, as the, based on the ownership that we, that the agency holds, Sound Transit, through that area, we are setting those expectations when it comes to safety compliance. And we have communicated that to WashDOT, and they, they have recognized our expectation. And that's also happening, not just from the get-go when we issued those letters that I mentioned, but also through the ongoing coordination meetings that are happening every other week.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Simpson, is that your hand up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it is. Thank you. Just so I'm clear on something. Amtrak trains will run through, someday, run through the city of Lakewood over six or seven crossings, six or seven times a day, at 79 miles an hour. Only does it slow down at a curve that doesn't run through a city to 30 miles an hour with acceptable safety hazards in order to save six minutes on track that still exists today. And we're going to put all of our reliance on technology, the positive track control, to make sure that none of this ever happened, that we've had in the past ever happens again. Am I basically capturing the gist of what we've heard tonight? And since I don't hear anything, let me answer my own question. Sorry, I, I apologize. I think I have. And I think what I'd like to see in discussions going forward is beside the technology and the engineering and the four-layered bureaucracy that I saw on one of your slides, I'd like to see some common sense. So maybe the train goes through Lakewood at 30 miles an hour, like it goes to the curve at 30 miles an hour. And some of us who actually live in the city and speak to the citizens of the city might feel a little bit better about this track bifurcating our city. Of course, yours. Sorry, if I may, just to jump in, I did want to just go back to what Julie mentioned a few minutes ago. We'll be, we're in the process of putting together the exhibit with, with the speed zones throughout the area. And I think that would be, I think that'll be very helpful to all of us just to have much more specificity about the speeds through that area. Thank you.
That's all the questions I see from council members. You from Sound Transit, does anyone have any wrap-up comments or?
Just want to thank everyone for your time and also just reiterate, this is the, this is not the only conversation we'll have. We'll continue to work with your city manager on a frequent basis with the updates and then come back to you all when we have more pertinent information to share, which could be with just Sound Transit or with Amtrak and WashDOT as well. So there, there's a long road ahead, so we look forward to continuing to have a conversation with you all.
Well, thank you very much. This has been informative. We appreciate your efforts at attempting to enhance the safety of our community. And as I said earlier, I believe that Sound Transit's safety culture is much more robust than Amtrak and WashDOT Rail. And we appreciate the fact that Sound Transit's trying to implement the recommended safety improvements that came out of the NTSB report and Sound Transit's own report. So thanks again for that and for coming tonight, and I'm sure we'll be in touch. We have a new review of the 2021 Lakewood Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments for the new City Industrial Center of Local Importance. For this, we have Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Glad to see you all safe and healthy. I'm going to share my screen here this evening to get started. And your packet has a memo that begins on page 12 regarding this topic. So yes, we're in the fall of 2020, and yes, we are talking about the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Cycle because this begins now and works its way through the process over the winter and into next spring. What we have right now is the very beginning of it. The SEPA review will occur once a docket is approved by council as well as a Department of Commerce review, and then, of course, the Planning Commission taking its action. And then ultimately, this, this docket, as it gets fleshed out, will come back to the council for action, as I said, next spring, summer. Where we are right now is step two of this bullet point list. So the beginning of August was the beginning of the call for public applications for any, either map or text amendments to the comprehensive plan or the zoning map. Tonight, we are still within that time period. So as of this Friday, we'll know if any private applicants will be bringing any requests to the commission and council. And then depending on how your conversation goes this evening, the council has a prerogative to add in additional amendments now or edit now, or they can certainly do that again anytime before it takes action on December 7th. So this is the first time you'll see it, but it's certainly not the last. And this is not the only time that you'll be able to discuss and edit amendments that are put before you or to add any more. September 2nd is when the Planning Commission will discuss the list of initial amendments. And then two weeks later, they'll hold a public hearing on the packet, excuse me. And then October 21st, they'll be taking action on a recommendation to come back to you. Once you've finished your budget process on November 23rd, the council is scheduled to review that recommendation from Planning Commission. And then December 7th, as I mentioned, is when the council is currently scheduled to take action on a resolution formalizing the docket for next year's package. Over winter and spring, there'll be the substantive and environmental review of all of the applications that are ultimately included in the docket. Next spring, the Planning Commission will conduct its full discussion and hearing and recommendation process. And then this will all come back to the council by next, next summer, I should say, probably June, July timeframe. As of we, as of right now, we have seven initiated, city-initiated text amendments. And we'll all walk through each one of those at a high level. The text that's would actually be for substantive review has yet to be drafted. We do not yet have any privately requested text or zone amendments in the package, but again, they have until this Friday to submit. And then tonight or some future meeting, the council can add or subtract amendments as well. So I'm going to just start walking through the ones that have been identified so far. And this one is a little lengthy in words right here on the screen, but this is something that is actually being funded by a grant that the city secured through Department of Commerce to create a new energy and climate change chapter. It's replacing the city comprehensive plan's current sustainability chapter. And the reason the city is bringing this forward is that this is really preparing for something that's, in the next few years, going to be something that's mandated because of a number of different at the state and regional level. So this was ahead of the curve a little bit and doing so with some funding from the state in order to, to not burden the city on trying to prepare some of the documents that will be required. So this is all about noticing first and foremost what has already been done by the city related to energy and climate change preparation and sustainability practices. So you'll see that middle paragraph talking about the policies and implementing actions already been taken by the city, and there's been quite a few. But also, the idea of this chapter would be to explain the regulatory context, starting at the federal level down to local, the anticipated impacts of climate change within the city of Lakewood. Obviously, there's some coastal areas with the Narrows, and there may be other changes over time as well to water bodies within the city. And then coming up with implementing actions going forward in addition to those goals and policies. The next few here, a little simpler explanation at least. First of all, as you remember, the council took action in the 2020 Comprehensive Plan Package to update much of Springbrook to become industrial rather than the residential. So in order to reflect that in the comprehensive plan, there's some policy and goal language that changes the status of Springbrook being a high-density residential area to becoming one that's more focused on industrial growth. The next one, 2021-03, would be also just changing in order to reflect action taken this year. In this case, it's the city's Park Legacy Plan update that's been adopted. The fourth is a number of items all related to housing being updated. And at this point, it might be transitory accommodations. It might be accessory dwelling unit language. And then also a larger conversation about, quote, "missing middle housing." There may be other things as well, but this is really to try to update the comprehensive plan to be reflective of development code updates that have happened with Title 18A as well as as well as some things that are happening again at the state level at a rather fast pace. So every legislative session now, we're seeing a number of bills come out with suggestions or encouragements or even requirements regarding housing. The fifth one will be something that will come to be as we move along in this process. As you know, Western State Hospital is in the middle right now of, of being reviewed for a new master plan by the city, but there's also some conversation at the state legislative level about where they may be locating new hospitals, whether it's on or off location in the city of Lakewood, et cetera. But as all of that moves forward, we will be including a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, text amendment to reflect what, what is going on between now and next spring. 2026, I'm sorry, 2021-06, excuse me, will be updates related to the two sub-area plans. The downtown sub-area plan, which has already been adopted, and then the Lakewood Station Subarea Plan, which is scheduled for adoption no later than next May 24th, so the week before Memorial Day. So those two sub-areas need to be updated within language in the Comprehensive Plan. The last one that I wanted to spend a little bit of time on tonight is the last one on the list so far. It's to take a look at the city's eight Centers of Local Importance and make some potential changes to them. Right now, there is a COLI, Center of Local Importance, four, and then five. And those two relate to first, the Industrial Business Park and Clover Park Technical College. And the fifth COLI, five, relates to South Tacoma Way. And what's being proposed in this application here is to actually eliminate those two COLIs and create a new one that would really be focused on industrial development. And the idea of a new industrial center of local importance would then be it being step one toward the creation of a countywide-recognized industrial center. And long story short, as you can see there on the bottom, that's just for information, informational purposes. But for instance, in this year's Pierce County Transportation Funding Competition for the Federal Highway Administration funds, they, they funnel through PSRC and then come down to a countywide-level application process. There was 10 million, 10 and a half million available for roadways and others, another almost 5 million for preservation. And then there's some other things that are set aside as well. So the idea here is not only would be recognizing within our own Comprehensive Plan the update and the new view of maybe using this area for industrial concentrated around the existing industrial business park, the Clover Park Technical College and its industrial education programs, the paths to and from I-5 and rail that are in this area of the city. And then, of course, by creating a countywide-recognized center, that's going to be something that can be used as a tool for other economic development, whether it's grant applications or working towards some sort of future area-wide goal or citywide goal regarding industrial development. So this is a map that shows you where all of the current Centers of Local Importance are, and numbers four and five are circled here. Number four is the one that includes the Lakewood Industrial Park and Clover Park. It's a little over 300 acres, and it was originally identified because of its intense industrial uses as well as the, the school. South Tacoma Way, which is number five, is almost 300 acres as well, and it was originally designated because of its commercial significance. Within these two areas, you'll see that what's currently there, the current zoning, is industrial, industrial business park. There's a little bit of open space and recreation within the rough geographic area. And then there's commercial to central businessistic and public and institutional. So you'll see that here, and this is simply a cut from the current zoning map. But this is public institutional, this is the industrial business park. That medium gray is all industrial zoning as the, the area sits. The South Tacoma Way, orange line down here, this whole column. And then you'll see that brighter purple and, and medium purple, those are the air corridor one and two zones. So that's the area we're generally talking about, and that's the zoning that currently exists. What's being suggested here is to take the land both from number four and number five and put them together into a single Center of Local Importance, but also to add some additional acreage as well. And so that's what this would look like here. You'll see some of that same acreage I was just pointing out with my cursor. So the blue is the institutional, that light gray is, excuse me, the industrial business park. Medium gray is industrial zoning. And then you'll see here, air corridors one and two. And then down here, we've taken out the, the actual clear zone because that, as you know, per Department of Defense and FAA guidance and regulations is supposed to be effectively empty, certainly not dense industrial type of activity. And then you have some on either side of the clear zone, additional parcels that are zoned industrial. So this is a large COLI, but it is all very much related to industrial development. And as you see here, it's along a couple of major corridors within the city out into 512 and I-5. So if you take a look again at the citywide map, this is showing you where that would be located and in scale relatively speaking to the rest of the Centers of Local Importance. So again, number four and five go away, and you have one that I've just termed East City, given its geographic area. But that whole area of the city would become a focus for industrial development and then supporting uses to that industrial development. One more map. So this is citywide, and you'll see this black outline is the downtown sub-area plan. This triangle piece is the Lakewood Station Subarea, which is getting developed right now. And then right above it and adjacent to both of those is this idea of a countywide center of industrial development. And it carries much, or it includes, excuse me, much of the developed land on the east side of the city. So the point here is to take a look at where are the opportunities for the city to gain some additional economic heft, if you will, economic development heft, by showing the market that this whole area has been targeted for industrial development. The fact is, under air corridor one and air corridor two zoning, the, the current residential zoning there, or excuse me, residential development there is non-conforming. And so the idea here is to encourage the eventual removal over time of that residential development and replacing it with something that is more in keeping with what's supposed to be within these zones of the city in terms of safety related to McCord Field, which is right here. And then again, as I mentioned, the, the idea and the opportunity to seek some additional transportation funding from the countywide process that currently Lakewood does not qualify for in order to help infuse this whole area with an effective and efficient freight mobility or industrial development mobility scheme. So those are your seven items that have been introduced so far. I don't know if the city council is prepared this evening to do any additional discussions of additional items. As I mentioned, this is not the only opportunity by any means to do so, but I'll just pause here to see if there's any questions or comments.
Questions for Ms. Spear? Mr. Brennstedter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I just have a first impression about the East Lakewood Center of Industrial Importance. And I can see taking Center of Local Importance four and moving a line to, to the east that's certainly to include all the property along Durango and that where either is or would appropriately be converted. But I'm concerned about taking the C2 area along South Tacoma Way that is the home of many commercial businesses, small businesses owned by a mix of minorities that are here that have a some level of pride in their identification as an international district, being able to go and do that, of being reprioritized for the, for the, for long-term industrial use despite what has happened with the, with the starlight. And that, and then perhaps though, you know, further, further east, the, the two air corridor zones probably makes sense to make them a center for industrial importance and focus. I mean, that's really kind of the way our, our zoning and our thought is. And if that would help us get those areas excluded for some of the housing and growth targets down the road, that would be helpful. But if you could take a look at how you might not include that commercial C2 area in a center like that, because I don't think it would be well-received as a vision for the future by this many small businesses that are there. But we'll see what, what, what the, what the final piece looks like, but if you consider that.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Spear? Thank you very much, but don't go away. The next item we have is the biennial review of the Downtown Subarea Plan, Planned Action and Hybrid Form-Based Code with Ms. Spear.
Thank you, and I'm opening up that one now. So give me just a moment, please. Oops, where did I go? There we go. All right. So thank you once again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Switching gears a little bit, but still talking land use and zoning. This, believe it or not, we're already almost to the two-year mark of the adoption of the Downtown Subarea Plan-related Hybrid Form-Based Code and Planned Action Ordinances. And what we're doing tonight is taking a look at, per the ordinances that adopted all three of those pieces, the status of the plan and its code, and whether that's working out well. And also the, taking a look at the planned action and whether any changes need to be made there based on any transportation improvements that have been made in the time since it was adopted. So Ordinance 695 and 696 were what authorized the implementation of what I'm calling the D-SAP package for the desire not to have to say the whole thing. But under the Ordinance 695, the idea was to monitor the impact of the downtown code in implementing the plan at least biennially. And so checking there to see if any changes need to be considered within the regulations that were adopted as Title 18B. Oops, sorry. And then on Ordinance 696, talking about how the Planned Action Ordinance shall be reviewed every two years and the transportation fees, looking at whether the cost basis for them need to be changed again based on whether or not transportation projects have been completed within the last biennial review period. So for the benefit of all involved, and particularly council member Farmer, who wasn't on the council when this was adopted, I'm going to walk quickly through some basics about the Downtown Subarea Plan. First of all, on this map here, you'll see the, the entire outline of the full area, but you'll also see several districts within the full sub-area highlighted. This is the Colonial District, colonial-style commercial buildings first and foremost, Town Center, which is where City Hall sits, and then the Town Center Shopping Center is there, East Commercial District, auto-oriented commercial centers and strip commercial along the arterials there. So this right here, for instance, is 100th Street. There are zoning districts within the sub-area as well. The Central Business District is the biggest one that covers most of this area. That's the, the zone. And so if you were to look on a zoning map, you'd see this whole thing, except for just a few areas, as a single color because it's all been zoned Central Business District. There are several overlay zones. First of all, the Colonial Overlay, now, I'm sure you all are well-familiar with this, but of course, this is the area where the Colonial Plaza was completed last year. Here's Motor Avenue right in the center of this. The Town Center Incentive Overlay, so within this gold portion of the map, you'll see here's Main Street, Lakewood Town Center Boulevard, Bristol Avenue right here. This is the idea of the highest and most intense growth within this sub-area for both commercial and residential development. You'll see, they're small, but right here, you'll see some dotted lines. And that is referring to what's called low-impact mixed-use roads. Allows for existing single-family residential development to remain in place while allowing for transformation over time into a more dense urban area, more identifiable downtown. And then all the way around here, you'll see this gray line inside the black line, and that is actually called the transition overlay. And that's where, if you were to look at the size and, and density of buildings, it would almost be that wedding cake look or that idea of a stair step from the more intense development over time within the sub-area to the existing residential areas all around it, which are at a lower height and also a lower density. Within the downtown sub-area was anticipated a couple of different concepts, and we've already gotten started on some of it. Again, you've got the, what was then called the Festival Street, it's now the Colonial Plaza. You've got this Green Street Loop, which was to enhance the existing roadways in that rectangular area to allow for non-auto-oriented easy access and a more pleasant experience as you're walking or biking, what have you. All of these pink areas are considered, quote, "catalyst sites," which means something where the city may make some sort of investment in infrastructure or something else that would help encourage private development to follow soon after. And then you've got the Central Park, which on this map is located to the northeast of City Hall. But it's been in the past talked about on the other side, I believe, of the Green Street Loop. So time will tell where it actually ends up. In terms of city action to implement this plan, it was adopted in October of 18. And about a year later, the Colonial Plaza was completed and launched. That Festival Street changed its name, but certainly kept with the idea of festivals. And unfortunately, with COVID, it hasn't been used to its maximum use, but that'll happen again as we get back to normal. This was recognized in a number of different venues and awarded its Healthy Lifestyles and Economic Development Prize now for the city. Couple of other things that the city has done this year, just a couple of months ago, the downtown loop with the Green Street amenities was added to the city's six-year transportation improvement program. And the downtown park is now recognized and included in the 2020 version of the Park's Legacy Plan. So as these things now start to move forward, the fact that they're in these two plans, they'll become the focus for construction planning and also funding applications for grants or other types of financial support for these activities. In terms of private activity, here you'll see in orange, the outline of the downtown sub-area, and the stars show you where some private applications have either come in or actually been approved, and some action has taken place on the ground. So within the last 22 months or so, it's been pretty even placement of this development throughout the sub-area. And a number of things have happened or have been talked about with the city. We'll see as things start to maybe pick up a little bit as we move into this next year, how much more momentum there is gained. And then the transportation mitigation fees, as of August 3rd, a total of almost $180,000 have been collected. The 24 projects that have been brought forward and discussed, 11 projects were not assessed any transportation mitigation fees based on the administrative policy that's in place right now, which is there is only a charge on net increases to transportation. So if there was an existing building or some type of development on a parcel and something is redeveloped or replaced there, it's only that net increase of trips where the applicant would have to pay any transportation mitigation fee. So where we sit, the Planning Commission held a public hearing about this topic on May 20th. No public comments were submitted. In the 22 months or so since it was adopted, obviously, development has been affected by COVID. And so there's really been, what is that, 16 or 17 months of, quote, "normal" activity within that sub-area to see how it's been doing. The recommendation by the Planning Commission was to not make any changes. The recommendation by the Planning Commission was to not make any changes yet to either the plan or to Title 18B, in part because there hasn't been any collected information, if you will, to the city by applicants that the either thing has really negative or anything onerous to it. And then the other recommendation before you tonight, because the Planning Commission does not have purview over the planned action, which is a CEPA document essentially, the Community and Economic Development Department is recommending no changes there either. So if the council were to take no action and reaffirm this as it is, the next time they would be before you would be in 2022. There are a couple of options, though, of course, for the council. First of all, if you were to take no action, as I just mentioned, or decide to take no action to make any changes, a week from now is Labor Day, so the day after that, on September 8th, would be a resolution to confirm the existing plan, planned action and development code. If, however, the council decided to make changes to either the plan, the goals and policies, or the development code, or if the council wanted to make changes to the planned action ordinance, both of those would require some change to next year's schedule and incorporation of some amendments at that point. So whether it becomes its own standalone development amendment package to come to you next year, or it's rolled into the annual development regulation update that, if you remember, we just did a few months ago. And then if it was any changes to the planned action ordinance, because that is a CEPA document, that would require reopening the downtown subarea's economic, or sorry, environmental impact statement. And then that would have to have a public, seeking public input through Department of Commerce as well. So just depending on what the council would like to do, the next steps will be determined by that. So again, I'll take any questions or try to answer any questions you have. And the discussion, I guess, would be to the council to figure out next steps.
Questions from council? Mr. Whalen?
Well, thanks, Ms. Spear, for the report. My only question would be if we had more feedback from Ms. Newton on the economic development side, if there were impediments to development, the mixed-use development we are longing to see take hold and develop anywhere within the downtown subarea plan. But we're not hearing that. So I assume that there aren't impediments, or COVID is counting the best of all of us. But that's the one big missing link, is we have yet to land a nice, small, medium, or large mixed-use development.
I hear you. Yeah, we have not had any discussion of criticism or saying that this is just stopping a project. And actually, when the Planning Commission was discussing it, Commissioner Guerrero was asked that same question. And his response was, no, I haven't heard anything either from people that I work with. So.
Yeah. Is what it is, I guess. Keep rolling forward, you know?
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Ms. Spear, for the update and.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could, does that mean that next week, or on September 8th, we are talking about a resolution for you to affirm all of those documents as they are?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll move to the next item of business, which is the JBLM North Access Improvement Project Update. For this, we have Mr. Bucic and Mr. Podwinski.
Evening, Mayor Anderson. Deputy Mayor Whalen, members of City Council. Tonight, at council's request, Troy and myself are going to.
Mr. Bucic, your sound's very low.
I'll try speaking louder. Is that a little better?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So tonight, Mr. Podwinski and myself are going to be discussing with council the 90% plans for the JBLM North Access Improvement Project. As you're aware, we submitted for the D-CIP application on June 25th, and we found out just a week or two ago that we were not successful. We weren't one of the 16 that is being proposed to move forward for funding. However, no good project guys, and so we're moving forward with finalizing the project as well as completing the design work for the Gravel Lake Drive component of the project. Mr. Podwinski, who I'm not seeing, there he is. Troy is going to walk you through a PowerPoint presentation that's going to show you the 90% plans from the North Gate Access Road all the way through to Nyansha. Troy?
Thanks, Paul. Thanks to Mr. Mayor. I just want to walk you guys through a couple of these slides, kind of point out some things here and there on the project, and leave it to you guys for some questions, really. So this is our typical sections. We have, on Washington Boulevard, we do have the Boulevard Look, as we discussed before. 19-foot wide lanes that allows people to, which is a bike lane, a 12-foot travel lane and a one foot shy that allows people to pull off to the right and an emergency vehicle to still pass on the left-hand side if need be. And then on Gravel Lake Drive, we do continue the trail on the lakeside with a 10-foot sidewalk and a six-foot sidewalk on the, on the non-lakeside, if you will. Starting at the North Gate Road, the western terminus or the western boundary with JBLM of the city at Nottingham and North Gate here is where the project starts. And this is a spot, I didn't have the block turned on, but this is a spot for one of our city gateway signs that we are going to include in with this project. Kind of flipping around. And we will have time to come back for questions if you guys have any, or just feel free to speak out. This is the roundabout at North Gate and Edgewood. What's interesting about this one is we have a kind of a frontage road to serve four lots here. We have that in one other spot. I'll show you here in a little bit. We do also have two right-of-way takes that we have acquired now. They're pretty small right-of-way takes. This one's about 200 square feet. This is about 100 square feet, give or take a little bit. Moving up to, sorry, moving up to the Edgewood, Washington Boulevard corridor. This is another little frontage road we have that serves three parcels. We were trying to go for a fourth, but could not get an easement from this parcel in order to get to this other parcel, in order to get everybody out. So we have kind of an oddball occurrence. We don't usually like to put a driveway in a roundabout, but we weren't left with any choices as they weren't relenting on wanting to give an easement to their neighbor in order to cross through their parcels. So we do have kind of an oddball. As it exists currently, it's a very dangerous situation for the person leaving this north driveway. They currently don't have a signal head. This is a signalized intersection, and they just kind of go, they look at, you know, each side of the signal and go as it is. So this will be a safe, safety improvement for them, but it's still not optimal in terms of flow. Moving along, you'll see we do have some, in and around the intersections, we do have hammerheads that we've installed in the right-of-way. The right-of-way line's not on, but it's actually back here through this. So that people can turn around and not have to back out into the street in the proximity of the roundabouts. Kind of a safety feature we've got for a lot of these. This is at Vernon and Washington. One interesting thing, and I neglected to mention this earlier, what we've gone to on this is a concrete panel in the intersection, as identified, the limits are here shown in the white to black, blacks asphalt, the whites concrete. And the reason for doing that is we've seen a lot of roundabouts in tight situations like this. I mean, this isn't a large roundabout, but it is by no means, you know, it's not a small roundabout, but it isn't by no means a large roundabout like we have at Murray and 150th. And you get a lot of torsional movement in here, along with the buses, the fire trucks, the loads that we have out here. The pavement, if we were to pave this with asphalt, it'd only last about 11 years before we'd need to start going back in and replacing it. The cost to replace it would be the cost, one time, would be the cost for the concrete difference, which the concrete will last 60 years. So after the first 11 years, it's paid for itself. So we've decided to move on this particular project with concrete intersections. The section between Vernon and Alameda, wanted to highlight some things. We, again, I didn't turn the block on on some of these, or it's hidden behind the hatching here. But we're doing cluster mailboxes again, where the group of people share individual mailboxes. The difference between some of our other streets and this one is, is there's enough room for people to pull over and be able to open the doors, and then people can get around the mail trucks so that there's no obstruction of traffic. So there's a real plus there. As far as Alameda goes, we have quite a bit of wall here, quite a bit of wall here. This particular individual wanted to slope it back, so we've got some slope there. There's quite a cut on one side and a fill on the other side of Alameda. Again, not too big of a deal. Lake City Boulevard, this is the fire station. Fire trucks come in here, they pull through and come out this way. So we anticipate actually a much faster movement for all fire vehicles and emergency vehicles through the corridor as this goes through, as compared to what they have today, especially at each end with the signals. They get quite a bit of delay with vehicles kind of backing up and that. They won't have that with the roundabouts. So that'll be a real plus. The section here between Lake City and 83rd, I wanted to highlight the bus stops we have. And we place them ahead of the roundabouts as the direction you're traveling or prior to it, so you're not backing up into the roundabouts, but they're not too close to the intersection that vehicles getting around. The buses can easily see the pedestrians crossing up ahead of them. Cruising through to 83rd, we have a significant right-of-way take, there were acquisition that we have received here. It's about 2,000 square feet of right-of-way, and we're going to end up repaving a little bit of this lot here, this section here, and restriping their parking lot. The church is well, happy with everything, so that turned out pretty well. This section narrows down a little bit between Washington and 83rd as the right-of-way narrows down. We only have about a foot and a half between the back of the sidewalk and the right-of-way line. As such, we put all the streetlights kind of in the middle. That's consistent throughout the corridor, but it just kind of lends itself to being able to not squeeze right-of-way so much. At Interlochen, this is a little bit different from what we had before. We have a right-of-way take of about 1,500 square feet here, and right-of-way acquisitions for this parcel is pretty small. I think it's only 40 square feet, but this parcel ended up being our largest take of about 2,300 square feet. No takes for the Water District or this condo apartment complex here. The roundabout, or the existing intersection now has got quite a big dip here as it comes up. We're going to cut down Washington Boulevard quite about two feet, and we're going to fill this section. So we've got quite a bit of wall here and quite a bit of wall here. But as you're able to, as you're able to come up southbound from Interlochen, you'll be able to see just clearly everywhere, except for, you know, you'll have a little bit of a sight distance issue here with the house. But the sight distance will be remarkably better than it is today. At Gravelly and Washington, we have the Lotus Blossom going in the center. We've got this area that we're just going to leave rock for now, for parks to eventually decide what they want to do with it. And then also, we have our 10-foot walking path here. Again, a 10-foot walking path on, coming south out of Gravelly, with mailboxes on this section of roadway. We plan on just putting them in the sidewalk, but having double-door mailboxes. You can open the door from the front and the backside of the sidewalk so that people don't have to get out into the lane. We don't have a bike lane on Gravelly, so we're not having that issue. This is the Lakewood Gardens parking area. We've got 36 parking stalls that are used for kind of a joint use for Lakewood Gardens, but mainly for the city for future use of this Gravelly Lake path around the lake. The idea behind that is that Lakewood Gardens has an annual event where they usually stack up in the grass out there. I don't know if you've ever attended that, but they were concerned greatly by the impact of the project to this. So it kind of killed two birds with one stone, that we were able to find parking it within the city right-of-way while still being able to serve their use. Here's a little bit south of that, and the terminus of this, you see it is served by a single frontage road. And that frontage road has a little rain garden back here. This is the Veterans Drive Roundabout. It connects to the Veterans Drive improvements. I don't show them here, but they'll match up just fine right there. We did get a right-of-way take from, or a right-of-way dedication from the developer here. And moving south on Gravelly, these are some of the longer services that the Water District, the Water District still is in with us on this project. And some of these services that they've got, this parcel in particular, is about 400 or 500 feet of, before they hit the meter, they're going to shorten that up and go all the way to the meter. Again, that's the Water District's portion of it, but they will be in with the project with us on it. This is North Street, and from North Street to Country Club Drive, there's quite a bit of a drop-off here in this section. And so we're going to put in a barrier wall similar to what we have on Pacific Highway. If you'll, up by the railroad bridge, as you're going up from Bridgeport to Gravelly, there's a little section of wall that we have there to prevent people from going over in steep embankments. So we're going to have a little section through there with that. You'll notice at Country Club Drive, we're really not changing too much there. The big key here is that the back of the sidewalk is pulled toward the roadside of the fence, so we're not having to touch that fence, although the Country Club has mentioned that they may want to redo the fences with the project, not with our contractor, though. The Nyansha Roundabout, we don't have the frontage road anymore, but we do have a private driveway access for these two parcels to get in and out. Another interesting tidbit on this one is it's got two lanes coming in, and we relocate and replace the monument sign or the gateway sign here at Nyansha. And up at Vernon, here's the Washington Boulevard Roundabout. And we're putting curb gutter and sidewalk from Washington Boulevard down to Veterans, and this would be the Veterans Roundabout. Any questions you guys may have, Mr. Mayor, at this time?
I'm sure there are. With the shared screen, it takes me a while to see who's got their hand up. Any questions? Mr. Whalen?
Just a quick question, going back to the Gravelly Lake segment. Is it going to be a sidewalk and lighting configuration like we have done on the other Gravelly Lake segment for the pedestrian, non-motorized transportation portion?
It is. We particularly have luminaires for the most part where they make sense on the lakeside, but then we have to hop over because we have, you can see the aerial power here, in the most part.
Is that a 10-foot wide sidewalk on the lakeside and six on the other?
It is, and it widens out. We widen it out so we don't have where the mailboxes are at. We widen it to 14, so we don't have any more mailman on the sidewalk issues.
Got it.
Mr. Branstad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering the chart, the picture of the traffic circle roundabout at Washington and Gravelly Lake. Where in that thing does the Lotus Blossom fall, and is that going to need to be moved?
Troy, can I answer that one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Branstad, that's an excellent question. I'm glad you brought it up. Right now, the Lotus Blossom is proposed to go right in the middle of the center roundabout. However, we've been having a lot of conversations internally about the fact that the Lotus Blossom being out there cannot be really appreciated by people walking by or bicycling by. And so I wanted to ask council to give some consideration to whether the Lotus Blossom can go into the area that's the new. That's the new, thank you Troy, that area right over there where Troy's pointing out, where the path as they're laid out right now, we can situate it so that people can walk up in close proximity to the Lotus Blossom and really appreciate it. We would work the landscaping so it wasn't blocked from view by anybody in the vehicle, but allow more interaction with the actual art.
I guess I would defer to the Arts Commission about whether having a lot of close proximity of pedestrians to the Lotus Blossom is better than having it in a predominantly visual location like it is now. it'd be interesting to see what they think about that.
Well, by happenstance, this last winter, I met with the Arts Commission and we talked quite a bit about artwork along both of these corridor projects, this one as well as the Veterans Drive project, because I didn't want to have us go build projects and not pour the concrete in, but not, not incorporate or give the opportunity for incorporating art into the overall system. And one of the things that they talked about a fair amount was the opportunity for public to get up close to and making sure that the public art can actually be embraced and viewed by people up close. So the Lotus Blossom is one of them. And I've mentioned once before, the, the long-term thought is would the four and a half mile walkway pathway around Gravely Lake be a good location to put in an art walk where artists' pieces of work can be situated every 500 to 1,000 feet? So that when people came to do the walk, they could also enjoy the artwork as it goes around. The thought there again was the same thing. They like that, they like the idea of being able to have people up close to the artwork itself. We can definitely touch base with them about whether the Lotus Blossom specifically could be moved there. We've also talked or had Mary Dodsworth talk with the artist, who was pretty adamant that it needed to stay at this intersection. Because we talked about moving it somewhere else in a different roundabout or something. That was before we had this area, I was very early in the design. It was before we had this, this bump out area, as I'm going to call it here, right off of Washington Boulevard, where something could go in there, including the Lotus Blossom, to bring it closer to people.
Okay. And I have one similar question at the Gravely Lake Drive, Nianza. And you, you mentioned that we would be repositioning and putting in the city's gateway sign there. I believe in that area, there is also a Blue Star Highway or some other monument type sign that's there. Is that going to be able to be retained or put someplace to where it is visible?
That's affirmative. The area that Troy, if you could identify the area to the east of the roundabout, where we talked about putting in, yeah, putting in pathways in here and some vegetation, which you see right here doesn't show the landscaping plan. But a similar thought was the pathway would actually divert through that. And so the Blue Star Memorial would go in that area along with potential areas for cyclists or pedestrians to stop and take a brief respite, either when they're coming from the Lake City area and/or coming from North Fort or coming through the proposed to-be-built shared-use path from the telecom area going into downtown or the points within the city. So that area right there Troy was just running his mouse around is still an area of exploration. We've got some preliminary designs laid out for that already, but it can be adjusted.
Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some comments and a couple of questions. First of all, I, I appreciate that we're going to try some concrete in some of these intersections. I noticed Tacoma has done that in, in parts of downtown Tacoma. And so I, I found that intriguing. And so now I kind, I understand why they were doing it just in intersections. But I, I think that that's inspired and I hope we get good, good results from that. Mike, a couple of questions. On the very last slide, and it's 77 in our packet, aren't we doing a portion of that already with veterans? How far up Vernon are we going with improvements? Is it just that one little block there?
So right now, I'm going to answer this again Troy. The area where Troy's mouse is almost touching, a little bit further down, further down if you look to the south, there you go. That's where the roundabout is actually being built on the Veterans Project. I actually went out there today to see the process and they've got the base course down. They got all the curving in. So I kind of cheated and slipped through the, the road closed sign and drove around the roundabout to see how well it rode and it rides really nice. So this project will tie into where Veterans is rebuilding Vernon all the way down past to Kenwood Drive.
Okay.
We actually have the same design firm, two different teams doing both projects for us. So they're making sure internally that they're matching grades and everything is lining up the way it should.
Okay, so the Veterans Drive project ends right there at that roundabout corner. It does, any, any part there that's in black has to be part of the next go-around?
Actually, yeah, some of it is, but if you drive out there now, you'll see that where the black ends, you have a very large pile of dirt because we're re-grading Vernon through that to tie into the roundabout.
Oh, okay. So then my other concern is that one where the one person wouldn't give the right-of-way to their neighbor. And it just seems to me one of those things that years from now, we're all going to regret for, for not doing what we should have done. Is, is it as bad as it looks? And is, is that a concern for me, for you from a safety standpoint for the people who are driving through and the people who live there? And what are our options?
So Troy, what is the anticipated speed through the roundabout?
Yeah, right?
It's 16 miles an hour for that roundabout.
How fast?
16, 1.6. Is the design speed on it?
So, so that's, so that little driveway right there is not ideal. Would you agree with that?
It, it's not ideal, but if they're pulling out straight out, they're just looking to the left. It's not like they're going to look to the right and left like they are today and timing the signal just right and making sure they actually even look straight ahead.
Okay.
So it, it's a marked improvement from what it is today. As far as our options go, we don't have, I mean, the easement isn't the city's easement. It's, it's, it's from one private property owner to another. So we don't have eminent domain that we can, we can go catch up on, on this. So our options are rather limited. Yeah, we could buy right-of-way for it, but it gets a little dicey there too. We can't buy it under eminent domain because it's not really for us.
Oh, okay. So we didn't win the, we didn't win the financing for the whole kit and caboodle. It sounds like we're planning to go forward with up to just a little past Interlochen?
That is correct.
And then, and then in your mind, if we were to begin to have discussions about trying to figure out a way to do the rest of it and you had to go for grant funding or whatever, would you break up the Wash, the remaining Washington Boulevard, Vernon into pieces? Or I mean, what, what would your recommendation be to us if we said this is still a priority for us? Do we just try to go for the whole thing with the big, I guess it's about a $10 million project, right? Or do we start to try to break it up and figure out a way to pay for it year by year or something?
Well, preferentially, I would like to see us do the complete project to get it done. But from a realistic perspective, if I had to drop a component of it, the easiest component would be that leg of Vernon between Washington Boulevard and Veterans Drive and do that at a later date. The attraction of that to the overall project is it ties the, the traffic from North Fort going to the VA Hospital and going to the American Lake Park. It's not a huge driver, but it is a nice feature to add to, to connect between the two. Plus, it also ties in with Vernon Butte going north as a part of the overall sidewalk connectivity plan. When we take a look at the rest of the project, we could conceit break it up into probably two segments. The first one going from Interlochen down to Vernon Roundabout. And then from Vernon Roundabout all the way to North Gate, if we had to break it up into two separate components. Again, the, the goal would be to build the next phase of work all as one piece.
Right, that would be, I, I, I agree with you. I think it would be really preferential, but and what, and what's your cost estimate on the part after Interlochen to Vernon and all the rest? Is it 10 million, 9 million?
In that neighborhood, yes.
Okay.
We can give you specific numbers after we're done when we send it to you tomorrow if you'd like.
Okay, great, thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Wayland?
Thinking about the movement of the art piece there. Is there any possible location close to Lakewood Gardens where we have some of that pedestrian-oriented parking there where people might be able to get out and do something?
I think the challenge we have there, because I actually asked if Professor Dodsworth could talk to the artist. And the artist was pretty adamant that it stayed at that intersection. Now, how much that says to us is whether we get to move it or not. I, I'm not an expert on it. If you're looking at it, there's some, some small areas they couldn't, that's right there Troy, thank you, perfect. Could be moved. It's not a, it's not a lot of space.
Right.
Not a lot of space. And there's not a lot of space behind the proposed parking areas to put any artwork in of substance size like Lotus Blossom. And again, we could always move another roundabout, but the issue there is again, nobody can get in proximity to the artwork.
Right. I'm wondering if Lakewood Gardens, if there's any topographical area there somewhat level, whether they could set aside a little piece, maybe do a dedication to the city in order to it to be there so it's in proximity to what they've got going on and all the parking we've got going on. Might be something symbiotic, I don't know. You know, if it's visible, but if it's back at the roundabout, my only point is, I'm sure you're making provision for it, is it's got to have lighting there because if people can't touch it, you know, get out of their cars, they got to at least be able to see it in the evening driving by, so it needs to be uplit.
Yeah, we've, we've anticipated lighting throughout all the project so that there's empty conduit where we can put it in so power can be brought into it. That area right there, we're anticipating there'd be some, something put in there artwork-wise, such as Lotus Blossom or something else. One of the other things that Troy didn't touch on, just want to make sure you know, is that when you're looking at the center median, I just want to remind you that in conversations with the council about limiting our landscaping and our long-term O and M costs, we have put the more signature trees every 50 feet apart in the center of the median. And the lighting is in the median also, so it's arched over to either side to give a uniform look going down Washington Boulevard. And then there are the, the trees at each one of the intersections, framing the intersection on the corners, a corner of a roundabout, but as the approaches of the roundabouts, that's where the additional trees are going to be located.
Got it. So in that area there on that roundabout, what's the, I mean, it's hard for me to get an estimate of what the size is for that area where the Lotus Blossom could go down there in that little corner? Yeah, just that whole area there?
It, it, it's pretty big. I mean, it, it's, it's every bit of 1,000 square feet for, for even this small one. This other one's probably 3, 3,500, 3,500 square feet. And the Lotus Blossom foundation's not that big. It's, it's a seven-foot diameter for the conch that goes around it.
Yeah, so we could easily do some cool lighting there and a little bench or two and, and it's accessed by the, the sidewalks it looks like, right?
Yep, they got sidewalks this way and we could, we could tweak the sidewalk to whatever you needed to tweak it to. And we've also got sidewalk this way.
Would that be a little bit of the lawn area like we currently have there in that roundabout?
It's, we wanted to pitch it, we haven't pitched this yet to parks, so we don't know what the gray area would be, whether it's rock or whether it's, whether it's lawn.
They like rock.
Yeah, I know they do, yeah. Well, I think, you know, that's an option. I'm happy to take it to the Arts Commission folks and chat about options at our next, we have a meeting in September. It'll be virtual, so maybe we can coordinate with Sally and have a couple of slides for that so we can insert that on their agenda. I don't know when you have to have this kind of finalized, but probably in the next month or two.
Actually, actually, our current plan right now is to advertise it around the first of the year.
Got it.
So we get good bids. We don't want to advertise it this fall. Everyone's so busy, we'll end up paying more. I also want to see if we're successful in our $3 million TIB grant, which we'll find out, I think it's the 20th or 24th of November.
Well, I'm thinking that, that area, it's one of the two spots. It's either in the center of the roundabout feature with some lighting, but not as accessible or in that other little area that you could make quite attractive and accessible. And it's still visible as a feature, you know, around that roundabout. Again, it's hard to say how mu, is there much defilade there in that spare spot? Or is it kind of lower or is it somewhat flat as you come around the corner there?
It's pretty flat all the way through it.
Yeah.
It can also be anything we want it to be.
Yeah, right, we could raise it up a little bit or whatever, right?
Absolutely. Give us some topographic relief there with the Lotus Blossom on the top, so it's more of a visual.
Wouldn't impact your sight distances too badly?
Not for a roundabout.
Yeah, we don't want people looking there anyway. They should be looking at the pedestrians and then also to the left as they enter, so it would be good either way.
Great. I can sell it, I think, I'll bring it to them.
And Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the deputy mayor not bringing up whether or not you could add a water feature to the Lotus.
That comes next meeting, Mike.
Yeah, go and do that. I had, I had a question about the, the funding. If in the next cycle for the grant that we did not receive this time, but that we did a submission for, if we were to apply for that to be able to finish the project, will the funds that we spend in 2021 to do the Gravely Lake Drive segment still be eligible to be documented as match against that same application?
I don't believe it will be able to, but we'll be coming back to you here next month or two to talk about the funding strategy for this project as well as the remainder of the Washington Boulevard project. We're still working out those numbers.
Okay, but, but we're not concerned about the numbers for the Interlochen and the Gravely Lake Drive to Nianza?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey?
No, I already got, I already spoke.
All right. I had a couple of questions going to, let me see, I'll pull it up on my other device here. I think it's page 70, the parking by the Lakewood Gardens. How, I, I just kind of interested in how extensive the investigation and planning on this has been and who's been contacted and what's been considered. My, you know, this is the first time I've seen it. My first blush being very familiar with that since I go by it virtually every day is that we have a very nice landscaped area that's going to turn to asphalt, changing the character of the drive in that location. And the second thing is, I don't know if Lakewood Gardens has anticipated the possible trespass issues that are involved. And for example, when we have busy, hot summer days at American Lake Park, the Veterans Police Department stations itself with a reader board at the entrance, turning people away where there is no obvious lake access. Uh, and there's certainly no public access. Uh, people just find, trying to find a way for, to the lake. So if, if you put 50 parking spots next to a lake in a wide open area that is not robustly staffed, aren't you just inviting people to traipse through Lakewood Gardens uh, onto the lake where there is, uh, no public ownership or access?
Well, that's a good question. When we were looking at this, we've been in con- conversation with Lakewood Gardens quite a bit. Um, they have reviewed the plans. They're very satisfied and happy with what we're providing out here. So from their perspective, they like the fact that there's going to be some defined parking that visitors to Lakewood Gardens will be able to use as well as when they have large fundraisers, that it'll also be accessible for them to use. It is public, it's going to be available for public to use under the premise that when the entire loop around Gravity Lake Drive is completed, four and a half miles, um, if it weren't for someplace for people to pull in, then other residents throughout the city would ha- would really not have any access to the entire walking path around the lake and bicycling path. Uh, we envision that this will become a relatively popular area for people to come and exercise around the lake. We've had a lot of comments from people already about, uh, the other improvements that were done and looking forward to seeing this being done, completed through here. If it turns out we start to have some issues here, then we'll need to look at how we can restrict access into it to certain times of the year and only a certain amount of the parking area. It's always a concern whenever you're providing public parking, how the public are going to make access to it, how they're going to use it. Uh, but when you consider all the different positive features of having this area accessible, then it seems to make the most sense to put some parking area out here. What was out there now was basically grass. And, um, not a lot of attractive feature to it. On the backside of it, we're going to be putting in some rain gardens for drainage. So we've been talking to them about, uh, how that could be used by Lakewood Gardens, possibly even beautify and maintain by them if they're interested in. In the past, there were some attempts to get the Lakewood Gardens to take care of the plantings around the Veterans Drive, Gravity Lake Drive intersection. That didn't go well because the plantings were on the opposite side of the road. And it was, uh, not something that they turned out their volunteers were interested in doing. So it all got pulled out.
And on the other side of that equation is just something you just mentioned. If we're enhancing a commercial enterprise, albeit a nonprofit, uh, there should be something in exchange, whether it's a maintenance agreement, uh, a- access for youth kayaking or something. Uh, oh, here, we're gonna, we're gonna build you a parking lot that's only this robust because you have occasional fundraisers. Just doesn't strike me as a great use of public money. So.
I, I would agree. I think it's important to acknowledge the fact that Lakewood Gardens won't be the primary user of it. It just happens to be an area that's fit within the corridor. There's no room on Niaza to put any kind of parking. It's too narrow. The other leg going up around the north has already been built and there wasn't any room there. This happens to be the, the widest area for the right of way. We have 100, 150 feet of right of way. Um, it narrows down as you go down around the south side towards Niaza. So it gets even narrower. So there's no room to put anything down there. So this stretch right here is where we have.
How, how wide is the right of way there?
150, 150 feet.
How much?
150.
150?
It's amazing. Yeah.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Busic's, the presentation. I had the same reaction that the mayor had concerning the parking there by Lakewood Gardens. And as I listened to you, I, I thought to myself, well, I can understand putting a walk, a sidewalk around to complete the loop around the lake. Could that be done? Or could we reduce the number of parking spaces? Cause as it stands now, that is one of the nice features I think of, of an entrance to Lakewood Gardens is the fact that there has that, there's that long rectangular sward of grass. And I, I personally don't want to see that gone either. And it's, it almost seems to me a contradiction in terms that a garden's, its frontage would be asphalt. And I'm wondering if there's a way we can either, if we can't just leave it as a sidewalk, is there a way we could change this configuration that has a little more of the environment and a little less of the asphalt present?
We absolutely can. Um, as you can see on this slide and the next slide, there's two access points into the round, in- into the parking area. Troy, go down to the next slide. As you can see, there's an access point coming in right off the roundabout because that's an existing ass po- a- access point to Lakewood Gardens. And then we have parking that goes from there up north. And Troy, go back to the previous one. We could stop the parking right there at that next access end. And so everything from that point going, uh, up towards Washington Boulevard could be removed. We could reduce the number of parkasals.
I would be interested in seeing plans like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thanks, thank you, uh, Mr. Podwinski and Mr. Busic for, uh, an informative, very detailed, uh, presentation. Uh, it's a little bit more difficult to, uh, grasp on, uh, cutout sections in of elec- of electronic documents that are, than it is on your normal, uh, 50 foot long rolls. Uh, but, uh, I think we can get the, the gist of it pretty well. We now move to a review of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. And for this, we have Lieutenant Andy Gildehouse.
Lieutenant Gildehouse?
Who is muted? There you go. Oh?
There we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I appreciate your time. I'm just going to quickly review the, uh, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. The City of Lakewood receives this grant every single year from the Department of Justice. It's a grant that is mainly used to, uh, help with critical funding necessary to support a range of programs to include law enforcement, uh, courts, crime prevention, education, community corrections, drug treatment and enforcement, uh, technology improvement, crime and victim programs as well as mental health programs. Um, over the past few years, we've, uh, used it for the trail program, which is an in-depth training program, um, for uh, the betterment of the people within our department. And then we've also, uh, used it for equipment. Uh, this year, the plan is to use it for two different, uh, pipe pieces of equipment. The first is to enhance our bike program. Um, that's, was restarted a few years back and has been absolutely successful um, in its integration back to the police department. Uh, one of the biggest problems we face with that right now though, is the equipment that we have, the bikes, uh, are 10 years old, if not older. In fact, some of those bikes came from the Pierce County Sheriff's Department prior to us transitioning over in 2004. So you can, uh, guess, uh, what those sound like when they're trying to go uphill and, um, they're rattling a little bit. We've been able to keep them together with, uh, with some, some tape and other, um, baling wire techniques, but, uh, we're getting to the point where they need to be, uh, replaced for the safety of our officers. And so we're going to use that to purchase four bicycles that will be fully equipped with all the emergency equipment that's required on them, safety equipment. Um, and that will allow our bicycle officers to continue to operate on that front and, uh, get out there within the community, which, um, has been, like I said, hugely successful, uh, over the last few years. And we want to, we want to keep growing with that. The, uh, second part of it, uh, of the grant is going to be used for cell phone, uh, repeater, uh, equipment within the department itself and the station. A little while back, we moved over to, uh, AT&amp;T for our cellular services when we joined with FirstNet. Uh, if you're not familiar with FirstNet, AT&amp;T in cooperation with federal government is creating a nationwide cellular system that is geared completely towards, uh, first responders, towards city, uh, local, regional governments, so that, uh, when things go bad, uh, our services aren't dropped and then we still have the capabilities to manage uh, what's going on around us without, um, losing all the, the important issues that we have to take care of through our cellular network. Uh, one of the great things about having a robust police station that you so nicely built us is that it also blocks a lot of the cellular signals. So inside the building, uh, a lot of the phones, uh, get drop calls, the, uh, laptops that are on the system that, um, use the air cards or the phones as, as partners to transmit, they lose their connection. And so this will help enhance that and cover the station so that we aren't losing those signals inside. Um, the total grant that we received from, uh, the Byrne Grant this year is $36,959. And with that equipment you put in there, that'll take us pretty close to the top. Um, depending on, we're still waiting to get one quote back on, on the cellular equipment, but we think we're within the range of where we need to be. And uh, so with that, there might be a little bit left over that we would be able to maybe, um, pick up one little item here or there, but, uh, for the most part, it's, it's pretty spoken for.
I, any, any questions for Lieutenant? Your hand up, John. Uh, I would just note that, uh, about two years ago, I had the opportunity to be sitting next to, uh, senior executive of AT&amp;T who on the, uh, FirstNet program. And he sent me some material on it and we discussed it, uh, actually it was a multi-day deal and ran into him again. And they were working on some truly amazing things like being able to send in a drone to circle the community that's, uh, suffered a disaster and keep the emergency cell phone system running. So, so it was good to have that capability. All right. Well, thank you very much, Andy. We'll, uh, look forward to seeing you out there on a new bike with extra gill, gills, extra gears for the old guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, we now move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. A few updates for you. Uh, first off, you might recall last fall, I believe it was, um, one of our representatives, Representative Christine Kilduff, um, a pro- asked the Attorney General's Office for an opinion regarding adult family homes, how they're cited, you know, who gets access, role of Western State, DSHS, et cetera. And, uh, the purpose of getting that opinion was, um, number one, if and actually making sure that, that, that DSHS was following the intent of what the state legislature adopted regarding adult family homes back in the 1970s. And the intent there is, um, if, if the answer to that question is no, that DSHS is not following the law as prescribed by the state legislature, then somebody's got some explaining to do. However, if the answer to that question is yes, they are, then Representative Kilduff then has a mechanism from which to move forward to change the law to get back to what the intent was, which adult, which is adult family home businesses are really only supposed to be for our most vulnerable as opposed to having sexually violent predators and sex offenders and people like that, um, in, 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 in an adult family home. Um, so I followed up with her office, uh, I think it was late last week. Um, her office got back with me and let her know, because with the question I had was, well, where's the AG's office on this? And, um, I know originally we were expecting some time for a ruling this fall. And, uh, that's still in, in the plan, but looking toward perhaps the December timeframe again, for a ruling from the AG's office on that. So I just wanted to give you all a heads up, um, on, on that. Um, at a future meeting, actually at your, uh, September 21st meeting, Tacoma Public Utilities asked to give the council an update on rate adjustments that they're looking at moving forward with as it relates to their electrical and water utility in 2021. Uh, this is something they do on an annual basis, but just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Um, would like to compliment our Assistant City Manager for Administrative Services and our finance team, as well as our Department Director's staff, as well as the mayor and the council, uh, for once again, we received from the State Auditor's Office, a clean um, bill of health, uh, no audit findings either on our financial statements or on our federal awards. As you know, we get a lot of, um, grants, particularly federal funding, and the threshold on those audits is very, very high. So to come away with no findings and a clean audit across the board is a very, very positive reflection on the city and our team here. And just wanted to pass that on to you. Um, earlier today, our Senior Policy Analyst, uh, Shannon Kelly Fong released the latest Build Your Better Here video, which focuses on parks. So that went out on social media. If you haven't seen that, um, please check our, uh, Facebook page for that. Uh, Mr. Buwer, our Assistant City Manager for Community and Economic Development, as well as, uh, strategic, a long-range, long-range and strategic planning manager Tiffany Spear, who you heard from on a couple of occasions this evening, um, met with their colleagues from, uh, Pierce County as well as Puyallup University Place in Auburn. And there's the reason that those cities are important is because the discussion was regarding population and housing allocation as prescribed by the Puget Sound Regional Council. Um, and updating those numbers for 2044 in advance of the 2050, uh, Vision Plan, which is currently, um, making its way through the, through the process. Um, as a, those four cities, including us, are considered to be core cities, which means that we are required, according to PSRC, to absorb 23% of the, um, population growth between now and 2044. Um, without getting into the specifics and, um, I'm going to have Mr. Buwer come give you a more detailed update as part of your October 19th meeting. Um, but wanted to tell you that all the cities agree that those are way too high in terms of what's happening in the real world. Um, for example, for Lakewood to be able to accommodate that, it would project our population would have to go to over 80,000. Uh, Mr. Buwer has done his own calculation based on not just what the history of Lakewood has been, but what also the future holds as well as our land use. And long story short, he projects our population at 2044 to be about 67, 68,000. And, uh, so right now that's the number that we're working on. At the end of the day, it will be the Pierce County Council who adopts these projections again for both population and housing. Uh, but again, I just wanted to give you a quick warning order that that process has been initiated. I believe it will also make its way through the Puget, I'm sorry, the Pierce College, Pierce County Regional Council or PCRC, which several of you sit on. But again, just wanted to give you a warning order that that process has been initiated. And Lakewood, as well as some of the other cities, do have issues with the, uh, population, uh, that we're all being prescribed to, um, try and take on as we look out to 2044. Um, another item, I might recall about a month or so ago, I gave you an update on the Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission. And, uh, that's a, uh, steering group that was put to, appointed by the governor and put together by the state legislature. Their, uh, role is to identify a future location for another airport here in Western Washington. Um, you might recall that while it wasn't recommended, uh, by staff or by WashDOT, uh, the folks on the steering committee, commission did ask for JBLM McCord Field to be considered for commercial air purposes. Uh, they also directed their staff from CACC to reach out to Pierce County. Don't know if that's happened yet. We also asked that they reach out to us in Lakewood to talk about this. Uh, to date, that has not happened. Um, however, our governmental affairs consultant Shelley Helder has done some researching on this and she learned a couple of things. The first, which actually are beneficial in terms of why there should be no commercial air at McCord Field. Um, the first factor that she found was that the enabling legislation that created the CACC and the process that they're to undertake states, quote, "Options for a new primary commercial aviation facility in Washington State may include expansion of an existing airport fac- may include expansion of an existing airport facility, but may not include citing a facility on or in the vicinity of a military installation that would be incompatible with the installation's ability to carry out its mission requirements," close quote. We assume that this is the reason why WashDOT didn't even put JBLM on the table for discussion. The other factor that she found out is that as it relates to the location of a new airport, there must be an airport sponsor, i.e. a local government, a city or a county. And highly unlikely that anyone in Pierce County is going to do that as it relates to JBLM. Matter of fact, Thurston County, there was a proposal to put the commercial airport in Thurston County. Thurston County Commission actually came out with a resolution opposing that and thus the CACC did not even consider Thurston County as a location. We're trying to track down what resolution or motion or action the commission took because maybe this is something that this body could or should consider in the near future. The next meeting of the CACC is scheduled for October 2020, actually a month or two months from now. And we recommend that we send a letter to the CACC expressing that we do not support McCordfield be considered for commercial air and the reasons why, and there are a number of good ones, as well as disinformation here. In addition, we plan on reaching out to our colleagues in other cities through SSMCP to ask them to do it. We understand Pierce County and Tacoma are also potentially considering this as well. But again, just wanted to keep you in the loop on that. Again, the goal there is that the CACC move and consider some other location other than McCordfield. As a matter of fact, they have six other locations. You might have read in the newspaper that both REI and Amazon are looking for new locations and having maybe a smaller footprint. On the Amazon side, I had a chance to talk with the CEO and president of the EDB, Bruce Kendall, and, you know, they have a good connection with Amazon. At this point in time, they've kind of put that off on the side because what they believe is whatever steps Amazon is going to take, whether or not they're going to stay or leave Seattle, they've already probably made the decision. And it could be that why they put out the results of their employee survey is perhaps to try and get the Seattle City Council to change some of its policies and that, in fact, Amazon might not leave Seattle at this time. However, the real opportunity today and into the next month or two is actually REI. REI was slated to move into their brand-new spanking headquarters in the Spring District, which is a new part of downtown Bellevue. However, before even doing that, they were supposed to do it this month, as a matter of fact, I believe. They decided to put the property up for sale. And the reason is, is because of COVID-19 and they realized that they don't need that large of a footprint. And so they're looking for ancillary spaces all over the Puget Sound region. And Tacoma and Pierce County has been identified as a potential opportunity. Long story short, there was a good discussion with a number of economic developers late last week talking about this. And again, long story short, the City of Lakewood, our economic development team led by our economic development manager Becky Newton, is going to put together a pitch that we can share with our colleagues here in Pierce County and show the benefits of why REI should consider Lakewood. And I think we're actually a bit ahead of the curve on this in that we also, we already have a good number of information already developed because of Lakewood Landing. We also have a couple of locations. And this would also pertain to Amazon at some time in the future. One is Lakewood Landing. The other is our town center area in terms of working with RPAI or some others. So we think there's an opportunity there. So hopefully more to follow on that. But again, we are going to put together a pitch document and work with our colleagues here in Pierce County, being led by the EDB. And I think in the interest of time, that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? I would note that the Puget Sound Regional Council, though it was not required to consider airport siting as part of a regional transportation plan. And it was, JBLM was dismissed as a non-starter, giving additional support to that argument. Then we'll go to council comments. Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, I can just share with you that I golfed in the Pierce College Golf Tournament on Thursday. And one of the members of the sister city made a presentation there. And I had an opportunity to go introduce myself to her and thank her for the mask that they gave the City of Lakewood. So she was very appreciative of that. So just wanted to share that with you guys.
Thank you. Mr. Bradstetter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. This past week, I did have a chance to participate in the interactive webinar that the Association of Washington Cities held on racial equity and how cities should think about addressing that issue in the current environment. And they, you know, a couple of takeaways were that they stress that just talking about it without any actions is probably something that's counterproductive, that if you really want to get started, you should link equity actions to your council goals and that you have, that you base that to do that. And you should really be sort of taking a look that although most of the examples that they chose about policy decisions in the past that have had long-term negative impacts, we're 30 or 40 years old. The issue is if you look at things and look at them about what long-term impact, not what is the immediate impact that's going on, to decide if you have a policy change or consideration to make as you're trying to look at long-term racial equity. And then this Wednesday, I'll be meeting with the Southside 911 Board. Hopefully, that will result in the approval of their 2021 budget, which will give us some firm numbers for our budget for that piece of it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson?
I'm good, sir.
Mr. Bulkey?
I'm good.
Mr. Whalen? You're muted. You're muted. Jason, you're muted. There you go.
There we go. I had nothing really to pitch in. There was a couple of street end things on gravelly and Stillicum Lake that the city manager's handling, but with the nice weather, the issue, you know, raises its head periodically. So they're on it and they're addressing it. Reminding people of our 2009 study was part of the issue.
Right? I don't have anything other than say, it's finally dinnertime.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you much.
Night.
Night.
Good to see everybody.
Yep.
Looking good, Mary.
Thank you.